So, good morning, everyone. I want to welcome you to the October 25th meeting of the Calvert County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Holland if he would give us an invocation, please.
Lord, we come before you today, and Lord, we offer this time of thanks. Lord, I pray that you be with us during this, this meeting, through this time of, of celebration, of looking forward to what you have in store for us, for the recognitions that are being offered today, for the decisions that are being made today. Lord, I lift up our commissioners to you, and Lord, I pray that you be with them. Lord, we are getting into the election cycle, and Lord, I know that this is a time of, of stress and just added responsibilities onto them, but Lord, I pray that you be with our county and our states and our nation as we begin to look at leaders coming up for the next year. Lord, give us wisdom. Lord, be with our leaders, those who are currently serving, and those whom you are rising up to lead next year. Lord, I pray for these that are serving now. Lord, that you give them wisdom, and Lord, we pray that you will honor them and, Lord, encourage them. Lord, I lift up those who are victims of domestic abuse. Lord, it's the hidden plague that's among us. Lord, I pray that for these relationships that are intended to be ones of love and honor and encouragement that then turn into betrayal and hurt and pain, Lord, I pray that you be with them, bless them. Lord, heal our families, heal our relationships. Lord, we pray for your peace and your prosperity to be upon this county, to be upon our lives, and Lord, I pray that in return that we give you honor and thanks and glory. I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all else.
So, thank you, Pastor Holland. I appreciate it. So, the next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions? I believe we do have a correction we need to remove, item four, the award. Unfortunately, the employee receiving the award could not come in today, so...
Mr. President, I'd make a motion that we accept the agenda as submitted with the omission of the award.
Second?
I have a motion in a second that we amend the agenda to remove item four. Otherwise, we adopt the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So, the next item, and I'm told that we have Senator Jackson by Zoom. Senator Jackson. Hello? All right. Just want to give you an opportunity. Next item we have on the agenda is a meeting with Department of Planning and Zoning about the transportation plan.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. President, if you, if you would allow me to say hello.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hello, tech, tech, tech. Today's technology is beyond me. Anyway, good, good morning, everyone. I'm honored to be here, looking forward to today's session as a segue into Calvert County's needs for the next legislative session. So, thank you very much.
So, being our representative on the Budget Committee, we're very glad that you're listening in today and...
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Actually, I'm your friend either way, so...
Either way, Senator Jackson. Good morning. Well, we're glad to have you listening in, and you're more than welcome to come in person anytime you'd like. So, it's a pleasure.
Yes, thank you.
All right. So, back to our agenda, that we have a meeting with Department of Planning and Zoning on the transportation plan. Oh, shoot. I'm sorry. We do have a proclamation. We've had so much fun this morning in staff meeting, I gotta settle down. So, the next item actually on the agenda is a proclamation. And Senator, Commissioner Wiems, would you like to present the proclamation?
Yes, sir.
I almost called him Senator Reams. Got Senator Jackson on my mind.
Thank you. Pastor Holland, please, sir, and any other... Yes, ma'am. Could you come here?
Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So, if you could go ahead and introduce yourself to those at home.
Hi, I'm Rosanna Vogt. I'm the founding director of the Circle of Angels Initiative. We are the conveners for the Daughters of Abraham and the Circle, and the Daughters are members of the Calvert Interfaith Council.
And I'm Pastor Ben Holland. I'm the pastor at Dunkirk Baptist Church in the northern part of the county and also a member of the Calvert Interfaith Council.
Thank you. Whereas, America was founded as a nation that supports freedom of religion and belief, and whereas, Calvert County is home to multiple faith-based communities that support the quality of life in our county, and whereas, faith communities provide educational opportunities, support those struggling with food insecurity, assist the homeless, offer ministries to families and children, respond to community crisis, and provide employment training, and whereas, faith communities support the human dignity and worth of all persons, encouraging unity and peace by practicing and teaching ethical principles that nurture peace, respect, justice, righteousness, and inclusion. And whereas, these communities are led by persons called for times such as this, who comfort us when we mourn, visit us when we are sick, and support us when we are weary. Now, therefore, be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the month of October be recognized as National Clergy Appreciation Month. Be further proclaimed that we express our appreciation to the faith-based communities of Calvert County and encourage all assemblies to pay tribute to their leaders for their tireless efforts in supporting us all, given under our hands and seal this 25th day of October 2022. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
I just want, on behalf of the Calvert Interfaith Council, to invite everyone to our annual Thanksgiving gathering, which is called Calvert Gives Thanks. This year, it's called Calvert Gives Thanks for Safety in Our Community, and the reason for that is it is to honor the CIC's participation with the schools, with the government and law enforcement in providing spaces in our churches and comfort during a storm or a time of a critical incident. This year, the gathering will be virtual, and in other years, we've had people from all over the nation and all over the globe, and we expect that again this year. Because it is virtual, please register online at the Calvert Interfaith Council website, which is cicmd.org, and I look forward to seeing everyone there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And if I may, yes. Many of our churches and faith communities are still struggling from the time of a pandemic. Many people who are making some very different spiritual choices in their lives. Many people are, have dropped out of churches, but we have a lot of clergy, not just myself, but many, that still faithfully minister to people, serve people. If you are part of a faith community, no matter what religious faith or denominational stripe you may be a part of, give appreciation to your pastors, clergy, ministers, in whatever capacity they, they are. I know of so many that are very stressed out, very discouraged, and a time of giving appreciation to those who are serving is very, very needed right now. So, in this time, pastor appreciation or clergy appreciation, again, whatever religion, faith, or denomination you may be a part of, give your ministers honor this month and tell them, thank you.
I forgot the most important thing, which is the date and time. So, it's Sunday, November 13th at 4:00 PM, and we look forward to having everyone there, and we will be recording it, so you can watch it forever. Thank you.
Okay. Here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you very much.
So, I just want to take this opportunity at all of our meetings, we have hopefully a representative from the clergy to come and give an invocation, and some days, we have to dub Commissioner Wiems as an honorary clergy member. So, maybe the council could work with Ashley to help us secure some clergy members for our meetings. We appreciate any of the help you can give, because sometimes we do, are challenged.
Absolutely. We, we appreciate you continuing to do that. Thank you.
As long as I'm sitting in this chair. So, we, we really do appreciate it. So, we're, I think we're finally going to get to this meeting that I've been trying to get to for the last 10 minutes. I'm excited.
Morning, Commissioners. Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. Today, we have the Maryland Department of Transportation Consolidated Transportation Tour, which occurs yearly, and today, we have Deputy Secretary, Deputy Secretary Earl Lewis.
Morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to Calvert County.
Thank you, thank you. It's always nice coming down here. I think the first time ever was in Calvert County, I worked for BG&E back in like 1987, 88, and I came down as a mechanical engineer doing vibrations testing on the turbine generator at Calvert Towns Power Plant. I think it was a restaurant we stopped at on the way down there. I can't remember the name, but I know it was good.
Depends how far down. Did you go past the plant?
Yeah, a little bit.
Cryin' Pan.
All right, that was probably...
Cryin' Pan.
Long time ago. I date myself.
It's still there.
Still there, okay.
Oh, yeah, it's still there.
Gotcha.
That's where a lot, a lot of guys, that, that was, outages and all that was all big, big stop.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I spent about six and a half years at BG&E, and I've been with MDOT the last 20, so...
Okay.
Infrastructure. Important. So, hello again, I'm Earl Lewis. Love the first name, right?
Right.
Deputy Secretary with the Maryland Department of Transportation. Thank you for inviting us to provide an overview of our draft six-year consolidated transportation program, more commonly known as the CTP, which covers fiscal years 2023 and 2020 to 2028. Before I got into it, Jim Ports would have loved to have been here. He loves coming out across the state during the tour, but unfortunately, he took ill over the weekend. He had to come back a little early from a, from a trip to a conference, and he's still recovering. So, trust me, he would really love to be here. So, he sends his regrets. I know you know Jim. I know Steve and I have talked on many occasions at Mako and other places, but just want to send his regrets. So, I brought the whole team from MDOT with me today.
Good.
I've got Administrator Tim Smith and District Engineer Kim Tran from the Maryland State Highway Administration. I've got Administrator Will Pine from the Maryland Transportation Authority. I have got Chrissy Neizer from the Motor Vehicle Administration. I've got Travis Johnston from the Maryland Transit Administration. I have Regional Aviation Assistance Director Ashy Solanke from the Maryland Aviation Administration. I'm also joined by Regional Planner Dan Janasek and Director of Government Affairs, Pilar Helms, and several others. So, first, I want to thank you for taking the time to meet with us at Mako this year. Mako's a great opportunity to connect and understand how we can work together and develop solutions for your local challenges, and we know there's always more transportation challenges. Over the years, I think we have developed a great working relationship. I can, can't emphasize enough that we're not only available one time a year at Mako, but we're here year-round. So, just pick up the phone and give us a call. You know our numbers. You know, let us know when you got any issues at all. I'm proud of our entire team. We're accessible, and we're here to things, to get, here to get things done, like, like we've had over a number of years now, as you are aware. Since the meeting you had with Jim at Mako, we've already addressed several key issues for the county. SHA is investigating traffic signal sequencing along Maryland 24 and Prince Frederick, and will reach out to share the results of our proposed improvements. As for the Maryland 231 corridor, Tim Smith will provide an update on improvements in his remarks. Now, I want to take a minute to look back over what we have accomplished working in partnership with you and other counties from Western Maryland to the Eastern Shore. Thanks to Governor Larry Hogan's record investments in transportation and infrastructure, we've accomplished a great deal over the last eight years. With the governor's leadership, MDOT immediately began moving forward on top transportation priorities in every region across the state. We've improved 100% of the state's highway system, making our roads and bridges much safer and less congested. Of the 69 poorly rated bridges we identified in 2015, SHA has replaced or repaired all of them. We are continuing to address aging infrastructure. We now have only 26 poorly rated bridges. That's a historical low. All these bridges are now either under construction, funded for construction, or in design. Also in our list of accomplishments is a switch to electronic tolling across the state. The move in keys is keeping traffic flowing and easing congestion. Speaking of tolling, a very important reminder, time is running out to pay your unpaid tolls and have the late fees waived. Back in February, we announced a customer assistance plan to help yourself help you. We've given customers nine months to get their late fees waived and pay their unpaid toll bills. On September 1st, we started the 90-day countdown. In fact, with 31 days in October, we're throwing in an extra day. The grace period ends on November 30th. The clock is ticking, and so today, customers only have 36 more days left to pay their tolls and get those fees paid and waived. If you haven't already done so, please remind your constituents, family members, neighbors, and colleagues to take advantage of this money-saving opportunity. They really don't want to miss that. All right. Turning to transit, our systems are also more reliable, thanks to Governor Hogan's historic investments to lower maintenance-related interruptions. As our infrastructure governor, he kept Maryland's port and airport open for business throughout the pandemic with continued investments at BWI, BWI Thurgood Marshall Airport and Maryland's Port of Baltimore. At BWI Marshall, we're now handling more air cargo than Reagan National and Dulles combined. And when container ships were backing up at other ports around the country, there were no delays at Maryland's Port of Baltimore. In fact, we welcome ships that were diverted here because they couldn't be served other places. We'll hear more about these and other major milestones from our transportation business units in just a moment. I want to stress that Governor Hogan has delivered more projects and more money to local jurisdictions through Highway User Revenue Program. During the past legislative session, we worked across the aisle to get a deal for local jurisdictions, increasing the amount of HUR funding by 33%. The successful negotiations allowed us to amend the bill to be even better than when it was originally proposed. That's a dramatic increase to help fund your transportation priorities and help provide local matching funds to capitalize on funds that will be available through the Bipartisan Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. MDOT is here to help you navigate the federal progress, process. That brings us to IIJA. I've been asked for the past nine months what we're funding with our IIJA funds. This is what we're funding. IIJA is not all new money. Includes our federal formula funding, including your projects that were already in the final FY 2022 to FY 2027 CTP. During the next six years of the draft FY 2023-28 CTP, Maryland has programmed $1.3 billion in new IIJA funding. That's $178 million for airports, $166 million for transit, and $966 million for highways. These allocations are based on the federal formula outlined in the IIJA by the federal government. We're working closely with our federal partners on specific criteria to program additional projects for both transit and highways. The funding will help with long-term state of good repair. It's important to Governor Hogan and to MDOT to advance at least one new priority project in every county in Baltimore City in the form of a new highway, transit, or aviation project. There also are potential for some additional projects and discretionary grants that are part of IIJA, and again, if there's discretionary grants that you think would be valuable for your region, reach out to us and, you know, we'll help with that process. We're here to serve. We're exploring those, and as always, we're here to help applying for any grants. So, shifting to details in the CTP, I can start off by telling you this is the largest transportation budget ever. The draft FY 2023 to FY 2028 CTP totals about $19.9 billion. That's nearly $2.9 billion, more than last year's final CTP of about $17.7 billion. As noted earlier, the draft CTP includes the largest increase in HUR funds, which you can spend on local projects. The 33% increase delivers hundreds of millions more, thanks to agreement the governor worked out with the legislature. That increase of nearly $2.2 billion in this draft CTP includes $1.3 billion in additional IIJA funds, improved revenue estimates post-pandemic, and MDOT's higher share of state corporate income tax. The CTP devotes 35% of the budget, $6.9 billion, to system preservation. That's $800 million more than last year's CTP. Those dollars are critical to achieve and maintain a state of good repair for roads, bridges, rail, port, and airports. Just as important, the CTP allows our transportation system to contribute directly to Maryland's economic recovery. That's the balance we need, maintaining our assets, delivering major projects, and planning for the future. That's how we deliver a network that's safe, reliable, accessible, and equitable for all Marylanders. I want to say it's been an honor to work with our dedicated team of MDOT employees to deliver projects and services every day. Secretary Ports has been highlighting their hard work in a video series we started called Ports Supports Employees. He's shown Marylanders what it's like to be a crane operator 165 feet in the air at the Port of Baltimore, and how our state highway crews do everything from filling potholes to picking up litter along busy highways. Now, I'd like to talk a little bit about trash. Litter along our highways cost us all some serious dough, more than $60 million over the last eight years. On average, that's more than $7 million a year. Think about all that waste. I'm sure every one of you can think of a better way to invest those funding, so... All right, and MDOT, we've watched our program. Yes?
So, so, we hear from time to time, you know, of course, the trash, like everyone else does, but the litany of signs that get all up and down the road, and there's a lot of confusion that they think that it's a county road, and not that we don't have, but on the state road, what is the state's, since you're bringing that up, what is the state's, so everybody can know, what, what, what is their take on, you know, there's a lot of, well, you're allowed to do it on the weekends, you're not allowed to do it. Could you kind of speak to when there's 9,000 of the same sign?
Yes, it gets out of control during times, like during election times.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. Tim's going to answer that one.
Well, I'm just going to talk, see if it works, the mic works.
It does.
Okay, great. So, if it's, if it's in our right of way, we, and we're, and we are aware of it, we will remove it. If, if, if it becomes a, a safety issue in terms of site distance, please contact our local shop or use our customer care management system. Please let us know that, because we can't be everywhere at all times. But basically, if it's behind the utility pole or behind traffic signal cabinet or pole, it's technically off our right of way and on private property, so it...
What about in the middle of Route 4?
That's definitely in our right of way.
And there are people, there are people that actually have businesses whose job it is with trucks and trailers to leave out on Friday afternoon at 5:00, put, I'm going to say...
Hundreds.
Thousands, you know, thousands of signs out before midnight, and then Sunday evening, they come back around with their flashing light, and they take down thousands of signs to rinse, wash, and repeat for next week. And like Commissioner Hart said, they're in the middle of the median, they're on the, immediately off the edge of the asphalt, and as you bring up trash, they blow over, they don't get picked up, the spikes end up coming up, or the, you know, the, the metal ends up coming up, getting caught in tires and cars and whatnot like that and causing damage. To, to find out what can or can't be, I don't know.
Is primarily on 2, 4, or a bunch of different roads?
Southern Maryland.
Primary 2 and 4.
Okay.
Just, I mean, I get asked about it a lot, and I am very, as you talk about election year, I am very, very selective about signs. I'm very, you're going to give me permission, you know, I'm not going to put it anywhere, you know what I mean? I'm very insecure and sort of very self-conscious, I would say, about where I put it, because, you know, I mean, it, it does, you know, some, some people hate them or whatever, and I'm just, you know, not looking to cause a lot of drama with it, you know, so, but, but yeah, I, I hear a lot about the weekend excursions of that stuff. So, with you guys here, I just thought an opportunity to say, what, what is the state's take on that?
The challenge with the folks that show up late Friday night and then very late Sunday morning, or early Monday morning, is we're limited in resources. I could deploy...
Is it legal? Because they, they will tell you it's legal.
No, it's not.
It's not legal.
It's not legal.
And when I, when I say that, they go, oh, no, you're wrong. And I'm like, well, I was, they're like, oh, no, there's, there's a, a window of Friday evening to Sunday, and I said, well...
There is a window, because state highway's not working.
It's a matter...
And that's, yeah, and that's, yeah.
That's the window.
It's a, it's a matter of whether I depo, we deploy resources over the weekend and limited resources that we could be deploying elsewhere than otherwise I'm picking up signs.
And some of it's not even businesses in the county. There'll be businesses from other counties and stuff, and you're like, that business doesn't exist here. But there'd be 30 of them, you know, same sign, just boom, 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 you know.
Well, you, we appreciate you bringing that to our attention. That's litter too?
Yeah, well, that's why I asked. Then you brought that up. What, what was this, how did, what was the state's take on that?
Yep. So, we can look, look, look into that.
Absolutely.
You're going to need a bigger bag.
Yes, we're going to need a bigger bag. But these are, these are great to hang over your headrest. So, you know, so you can put your litter rather than people throwing it out the window. I know you wouldn't do that, but we've got a bunch of these bags too, just as demonstrations, and so you're welcome to them. So, thank you. We appreciate all the help. This is why we're here, to, to have back and forth, and you can share information with us, we can share information with you. So, with that, I'd now turn to Tim Smith, Administrator of SHA, and he's going to give SHA's update.
Thank you, Earl. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Tim Smith, SHA Administrator. Honored to lead the team, but it's, so it's easier to lead a team when you got great players, and Kim Tran's with me here. She's a district engineer supporting Calvert County. I know sometimes you rebuild, and sometimes you just reload, and Kim's definitely one of those, she was put in place last fall, and I know she's been doing a great job. It makes my job a lot easier with her in this role. So, the last few years, we've been talking about how we're going to build our shelf of projects in state highway, and with, especially with IIJA coming in and Bipartisan Infrastructure Bill. So, I talked about mainly three different areas. One was asset management, keeping our, our existing highway infrastructure in a state of good repair, and beyond pavement and bridges, but our signals, traffic barriers, roadway lighting, those type of things. Talked about accessibility, and that's really about not only getting motorists from point A to point B safely, but we're getting bicyclists and pedestrians, you know, making sure they get safely from point A to point C, and following a vision zero effort. And lastly, mobility, and that's really about relieving congestion, and we're trying to do that a little differently. In addition to geometric improvements, potentially adding capacity to our existing roadway, we're looking at our existing footprint as well, and how we can make, make the most efficient use of that. Sometimes that's using shoulder, sometimes that's, that's kind of what we're looking at Maryland 24 corridor is. at Maryland 2-4 corridor, is there's things we can do with the traffic signals and, and artificial intelligence and sensors to better, more efficiently move vehicles from point A to point B. So you'll see in our CTP kind of a suite of projects that reflect that asset management, accessibility, and mobility type efforts. And as Deputy Secretary Lewis mentioned, he highlighted a few, but I just wanted to highlight a few projects we finished over the last, or either finished or started over the last year in Calvert County. So one, I drove through it this morning, Maryland 4 there at Mount Harmony, that's really kind of that mobility. We're trying to help folks move from point A to point B there, but also a safety accessibility point to that. We just began that recently. We're also there in Chesapeake Beach this fall, we'll be initiating some sidewalk improvements on, from Chesapeake Village Boulevard to First Street. That's about that, back to accessibility, trying to help our pedestrians get from point A to point B. And also Maryland 4 this morning, I saw there, just north of Huntington, we're, we're putting in some new guard rail and end treatments. We're also doing that on Maryland 2, near Maryland 262. So that's really about trying to keep our traffic barrier up to proper safety standards and making sure we're, we're keeping our, our assets in a state of good repair. You heard Deputy Secretary talk about our IIJA and how we're using that to build, like I said, I mentioned build this project, what we're planning on delivering over the next five years to kind of connect people to life opportunities. The highlight there for Calvert County was, we've heard this over the last few years, and when I was District 5 Engineer, I knew the 231 corridor is, is important to Calvert County. So we're improving three different intersections along the Maryland 231 corridor. That's back to that safety and accessibility part, but between Mason and Toy Lane, we're, we're putting in improvements there. We're also putting improvements at Maryland 231 at 508, as well as Maryland 231 at Skipjack and Sixes Road. So trying to put safety improvements as well as make sure folks can get from point A to point B safely. In closing, I just want to thank you for your patience as I kind of shared some things here, and more importantly, just continue the collaboration. The more we understand and, and know your needs and concerns, it helps us build better products, and the more we can share where we're at, things I think that builds a better relationship, and we end up with a better product for customers overall. So thank you, like I said, thank you for your patience, and I'm going to turn it over to our teammate at MDTA, Will Pines.
Well, thank you, Tim, and.
Mr. President, before you get, before you move on, if I might.
Sure. Senator Jackson.
Thank you, thank you very much. Look, I've been eight years on the, you know, the state legislature, and kind of played your majority of that to be on the legislative committee for seven or eight years, and I'd like to commend our partners, MDOT and State Highway. You mentioned Mason Road. Thank you. I can't even say thank you enough, and I can thank you, Commissioner Hart, Commissioner Weems, and all the commissioners, but this has been something that's on the plate prior to me coming down. So we do appreciate your attention on the 231 corridor and the challenges in some of that area. So thank you, just want to say that publicly.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Senator Jackson.
Thank you, Senator. Good morning, distinguished state, county, and local elected officials. I'm Will Pines, Executive Director for the Maryland Transportation Authority, and as Deputy Secretary mentioned, time is running out with the MDTA's civil penalty waiver grace period. Please take advantage of the plan now by paying unpaid video tolls between now and 11:59 PM on November 30th. And sorry to be so specific, but we do want to be really clear that the program is coming to an end soon.
It's funny you bring that up, so, you know, to people that don't travel quite a bit, they hit the Bay Bridge and they go, where's the toll guy? Right? So you go, well, I didn't pay anything. I know I'm going to have to pay something. So is the way of payment now is going to be a bill in the mail, is what folks should anticipate, correct?
If you don't have an EZ Pass, yes, you're going to get a.
There's three payment options for tolling in Maryland. One is, and the most convenient way and the way that, as Deputy Secretary mentioned, that we encourage most customers to utilize is EZ Pass. The second is what's called pay by plate. That option, you can drive through the gantry at highway speed, that'll take a picture of your license plate, and in our system, you associate that license plate with a credit card on file. You do not need a transponder, but the downside to that system is it only works in Maryland. So if you drive through Delaware or Virginia or anywhere else, that pay by plate will not work. It only works in Maryland. The last option is, as you kind of alluded to, a video toll where you drive through, we take a picture of the license plate, we have to do the image review to associate the license plate, provide the information, pull it from the DMV, and then provide a notice of toll due to the customer.
Isn't that a mess? I mean, you know, I mean, the, the person that goes across that Bay Bridge, say, three times a year or something like that, you know what I mean? And I'm sure there's millions that don't really frequent going over there. I mean, ever since I've been a kid, there was a toll person there, and, I mean, and I know COVID facilitated a lot of that, and I'm sure there was a cost analysis, and everything's always done, you know, in a cost analysis, but, you know.
Going back in time, the Bay Bridge transition, you kind of focused there, we actually transitioned early to electronic tolling at the Bay Bridge due to congestion issues. We had at the time our right lane westbound rehabilitation project ongoing, and we had a lot of calls from the public, the comptroller, the governor, legislature, you name it, everybody was asking us to eliminate the toll boost, to allow for people to move at highway speeds through that area. So we certainly understand that electronic tolling does remove the convenience of cash for folks that preferred that option. However, at the time when we transitioned, only about 15% of our customers used cash. The majority were using EZ Pass.
Sure, or trying to do credit, or, I mean, nobody carries cash anymore. I can see all the headaches that go there, and I don't have a solution. I'm sure you guys spent many, many meetings discussing tolls, and I understand the importance, you know, to pay for maintenance and all that stuff, but there's got to be a tremendous cost in mailing out to all these folks, and then the collection piece, all that, that is the juice really worth the squeeze at the end of the day? I mean.
It really is. You look around the country, Virginia has electronic tolling, Delaware, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, New York.
The next generation will probably, it will be, you know, but there's still a few of us old guys running around that go, where's the person I give the money to?
Well, a follow-up on Commissioner Hart. The, I remember under the previous administration, the tolls went up significantly, and then under Governor Hogan's administration, anybody with an EZ Pass, I think is paying almost half in some places, or even less than half than what some of the video tolls are and everything else.
Right, if you get the commuter rate.
I, I know, I know every one of my vehicles has an EZ Pass, they're cheap, they're inexpensive, they can all link to be, they can all be linked together, they end up saving me as a consumer money. And I don't know the exact numbers, but I know that one of the places, it's almost three times more to have toll by mail.
Yeah, so let's take the Fort McHenry Tunnel as an example. The Maryland EZ Pass rate is $3 there, it's $6 for a video toll. Furthermore, one of the, I'm glad you brought up Governor Hogan, two significant initiatives that he initiated, one was that he eliminated the monthly maintenance fee that you would have to pay to have an account, and secondly, he eliminated the charge for a transponder. So in order to have an EZ Pass account, there is no cost to set it up, there's no mandatory upfront. The only folks that do have that is if you're out of state and you don't use it frequently enough, then we have a charge. But everybody that lives in Maryland can get an EZ Pass account at no cost to them. They do have to have preloaded funds on the account so that when they go through, it deducts from that amount, but that's their money, and if they close.
I'm sorry, that's as little as $25, right?
That's $25, that's correct. So really, in terms of, you know, even an infrequent user, there's really no disincentive of having an EZ Pass, there's no charge to do it. You, you set it up and you go at that point. So that's really what we're asking your help for. We did actually, one of my remarks was going to comment on that we sent out a constituent letter to all elected officials, county and state, asking for your help, both on alerting to the Customer Assistance Plan, but also helping with education on how to utilize our toll system and have a good experience. The vast majority of our customers do utilize EZ Pass, and they do have a great experience when they do. We, almost all of the calls that we get with complaints are from folks that have video tolls.
And now that we're sitting here trying to sell EZ Passes, where can people in Calvert County find them?
So I don't have the specific locations. I know we have an MVA at our Waldorf, at the MVA branch in Waldorf.
Do you have to physically go there to get it?
No, you can order transponders online. We also have currently a limited supply in Giants and Weeze grocery stores, but there's a map, if you go onto DriveEZMD.com, you can look at the map, it'll show you every location where you can stop and get one. You also can obviously put in an order through that DriveEZMD.com website and have it shipped straight to your home. So get the EZ Pass, that's, that's the best answer.
Yeah, I just think, you know, and not, and not that, look, seniors are extremely sharp with, with, you know, getting all that stuff, but there are some people that just, you know, with technology and stuff, and it's, so I question that, you know, because the few times I go through, I'm like, this has got to be a mess, you know, and I just think, you know, and I, and I get it, and to, being a small business guy, I know the whole premise is eliminate labor, right? That is, so, you know, you don't have the person there, which means no benefits, no all that kind of stuff, but somebody's got to take and go, okay, send out that bill, send out that bill, send out that bill.
Yeah, there's a lot of other benefits to electronic tolling, less idling, it's better for the environment, and we frankly, as I mentioned before, had it in our strategic plan for nearly a decade to convert our facilities to electronic tolling because people were asking for it from the congestion relief benefits that it brings. I don't know if you've, again, I'm going to talk about the New Nice Middleton Bridge, if you've had the chance to go over that yet. You previously had to slow down to 5 miles an hour.
Sure.
I, I signed to be able to drive 50 miles an hour all the way through the corridor now. That area used to back up four and a half miles, and now you're going to be able to cruise on through and.
Well, the Bay Bridge was a nightmare, there's no, you know, but I, I was just curious, I, I figured this, that's got to be, there's got to be somebody at the complaint desk that hates summertime with the Bay Bridge, because I just can't, you know, and you guys have brought it up twice about paying that delay quick, probably a lot of people don't even know that bill's sitting, because they're like, they forget about it. They go, and then they go, I didn't pay it, and then, you know, a month later, the bill's sitting around somewhere.
Yeah, we don't forget about it, obviously.
Oh, no doubt about that. Now, does that go against somebody's insurance, or, I mean, you know, the last thing you want is problems with the MVA, so.
So currently, we have our suspension and enforcement processes on hold through this Customer Assistance Plan. That was a nine-month program, it started last February. We've sent direct mailers to every customer and their notices, and to those customers who have not paid anything since February, we also sent a direct mailer to them. So as the Deputy Secretary mentioned, we are reminding folks that this program's.
Can you imagine your stuff suspended for a $4 toll or something, and that's why, you know, it's just.
The laws do have dollar thresholds for when we can flag a registration and suspend, so it's not, no one's getting their, their registration suspended for $4.
Good, good.
But those, starting December 1st, customers will be responsible for the full amounts of their tolls and civil penalties, which will be due based on the printed due dates on those notices. Did you have a question?
Yes, he brought up a very valid point. A lot of people move, they don't update their addresses, and I come across a lot of letters from you guys in mailboxes of people that have already moved out, sometimes a year before. Is there a website, is there a location that people can go to and say, here's my license plate number, do I have any penalties or fines that I'm responsible for prior to the end of the month where they could get that?
Yeah, the, the DriveEZMD.com website is the central hub for all tolling in Maryland. That's for every payment option we have. When you go to that website, there's a Pay Tolls Now link that you can click on, and that will allow you to enter in. You can look it up either by the mailing number that you receive that we'll send to the customer, or by their license plate, they can look up any tolls associated with that plate.
Because I come across hundreds of year letters throughout the year from some people that have moved on, and I always sit there and wonder, is there a place that they can actually go and pay these fines when they don't get the letters? Because I know they don't get the letters. You guys send them out, they don't find the, they don't find the right home.
Yeah, I mean, we, we do have instances frankly of.
I'm just glad to know, but there is a way, if they go in, they can go on to, what's the website again?
It's DriveEZMD.com.
DriveEZMD.com, they can go in there, they can look up their license plate number and see if there's anything out there floating.
That's correct.
Good stuff, thank you.
And the good news is that the overwhelming majority of people do pay their bills and their tolls.
Oh, I think everybody would pay, but, but, but Commissioner Gary brings up a great point because you move, and, you know, you take a month or so to get it, you know, the whole transition on, and, you know, so it's just, and I didn't mean to open up this huge can of worms, you know, but.
It's a challenge doing business, yes.
Yeah, you know, I just, I know, like I've driven, I'm like, well, I know the bill's coming, where is it? You know, so, yeah.
The good news is, it is easy to reach us now. Our call and web chat wait times are much lower than they were previously, kind of following the height of the pandemic, so customers can easily reach us now to resolve any of their tolling questions or needs. We also have completed posting all Maryland customer tolls that were deferred during the pandemic, and the MDTA encourages customers to go to that website, DriveEZMD.com, to check for their tolls, pay their tolls before those civil penalties are assessed. So now, let me talk about some projects. As I mentioned, the new wider and safer bridge at the Nice Middleton Bridge opened about two weeks ago, and I had the pleasure of joining Governor Hogan along with members of the Tri-County Council at the ribbon cutting celebrations. Construction on the $463 million New Nice Bridge made tremendous progress. We ended up opening three months early and on budget. The project replaced the existing two-lane bridge with a new four-lane span that aligned with the existing roadway approaches in Maryland and Virginia. Demolition of the existing bridge is underway, and materials from that existing bridge demolition will be used for creating artificial reef habitat. Additionally, the project is providing oyster seeding on approximately 100 acres in the Potomac River Shed. The new bridge has doubled the vehicle capacity, improved safety, and replaced the toll plaza with highway speed electronic tolling, like we talked about. There are remaining ITS devices, virtual weigh station, and bicycle features that are still ongoing. Those bicycle accommodations are anticipated to be completed early next year. And now for another project of statewide importance, for those of you traveling over the Bay Bridge, we just completed our open houses on the $28 million Bay Crossing Study Tier 2 NEPA in early September. The governor announced the funding for that Tier 2 in June, following the Federal Highway Administration's April approval of the combined final environmental impact statement and Record of Decision for the Bay Crossing Study Tier 1 NEPA. The four-to-five-year Tier 2 study will build upon the Tier 1 findings and identify specific alignment alternatives within what's called Corridor 7. That corridor is the two-mile-wide corridor that runs from the Severn River Bridge in Anarunel County to the US 5301 split in Queen Anne's County. So please visit BayCrossingStudy.com for any additional information you'd like to learn about those ongoing Tier 2 activities. We did record the virtual open house, so you can watch the whole thing there if you, if you choose. So unless there's any other questions, I'm going to thank you for having me then, and I'll turn it over now to Travis Johnston at the MTA.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Will, and good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
For the record, I'm Travis Johnston, the Local Transit Support Director for MTA. I'm glad to be here with you today to report that it's an exciting time to be working in transit in Maryland. Through the Office of Local Transit Support, MTA continues to ensure transit systems across the state remain a safe and reliable transportation option for local residents. In addition to improving reliability, MTA has been focused, focusing on delivering innovations and enhancements that improve the rider experience. Most notably, real-time GPS capability through the transit app, enabling riders to know when their commuter bus will arrive. Also, mobile fare payment with Charm Pass. Last year, we launched Charm Flex 3 and 10-day passes in response to those riders who needed more flexible commute options. MTA continues to make a significant capital investments in the state of good repair projects to ensure the transit system remains a safe and reliable transportation option for the region. The Capital Needs Inventory Report, which was released back in July, details MTA's progress in reducing SGR backlog from 16.2% of all assets to 14.4% over the last three years. Expected levels of state and federal funding will further reduce that number to 5.5% by 2027 and 1.3% by 2028. and 1.3% by 2031, meeting 98% of our needs. M T A is also preparing for the future of transit. We are in the final stages of completing the first 50 year statewide transit plan. Building upon existing regional and local transit plans across the state, the plan will outline a 50 year vision for transit in Maryland and help define transit needs across the state for future generations. We appreciate the county's participation in the development of the plan and are looking forward to moving into implementation. Last, certainly not least, M T A makes a significant investment in transit in Calvert County by providing nearly 1.3 million in operating and capital grants to support the local transit operation. Thank you for your time. I will now turn it over to M V A Administrator Chrissy Neiser.
Before you run, do you have a number of how many commuters use the buses in Calvert County?
For the Calvert County system itself? I do not. We could certainly get that for you, though.
Just interested to see.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Travis, and good morning. It's a pleasure to be with you this morning. My name is Chrissy Neiser, M V A Administrator. And at M V A, we remain focused on providing that premier customer service, both inside our branch offices as well as through our alternative services. One of the things we're most proud of is our new award winning I T modernization project. We just completed that in December of last year. It's called Customer Connect. I know we've talked about it the last few years, so we're now finally at completion. And that gives not only us the ability to see everything related to your M V A business, whether it's driver license, I D card or vehicle registration, but also puts that information at the hands of the customer. So now many more things can be done online. In fact, 74% of our transactions are actually done outside of that traditional branch office, sitting there with a customer agent, completing the transaction, which we know is what people want. They want to be able to do things in their convenience. We're also encouraging all of our customers to sign up for a my M V A account. Again, any letter that we've ever sent you, um, the status of your license, if you're a C D L driver, your medical certificate, all that information, all conveniently in one location that you can access at any time, 24 hours a day securely. Um, you can also make an appointment and we are, just as a reminder, appointment only at our branch offices. That really has enabled us to serve our customers much more efficiently. So 75% of our customers are now served within 15 minutes or less. Um, we're actually about a 10 minute average wait time, so.
That's a fact, because I could tell you, I'd rather have a root canal than go to the M V A. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And I'm not alone. Okay? And when I had to get the real I D, I'm like, are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? I'm old as dirt. How many times have I got a license? What do I need all this stuff for? So I I'm I'm all panicked. I'm looking at it 90 different times because, man, you know, I have to get this. It's mandatory. I make the appointment and I'm going to be off on my time probably a little bit, but I think my time was like 9:20, something like that, whatever. I get there at nine o'clock, hand the 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 person my stuff, they look through it, I sit down, I'm back in my car at 9:20. I've never experienced that in my life and I've told so many people freaked out about that. I'm like, I gotta tell you, this appointment thing is the way to go. It really is. I mean, because, you know, the the uh, uh, the the worrieness that comes with it that, you know, I mean, because I, we all know the old days of standing in the line, get there. No, you gotta get in that line over there. I mean, oh, boy, please don't get it, don't.
So the old days are over, so no more root canal.
Yeah, I I hope you never go back to that. I gotta tell you.
And that is really, it's not only the system enhancement, so really that premier customer service that we've emphasized. And so even interacting with the agents, I hope you find that to be a a.
It was great. It was the best experience I've ever had there in all my time and and hopefully, I don't jinx it. It's just, uh, but that was, couldn't believe the speed.
Well, thank you.
So if you want to hear everything?
Uh-oh.
The last time I was in Loville, which is probably two years ago, your agent never said one word to me.
Oh, my goodness.
I sat down, I handed her my paperwork, she did the paperwork, she handed me back my stuff, never said hello, goodbye, have a nice day or nothing.
Well, you know, if you have experiences like that or you hear about it.
Better than what you hear about.
Yeah.
We like to hear experiences, good and bad. I mean, honestly, because we can't fix something unless we know about it. Um, I will say, and I was just in Indianapolis talking to the folks there, you know, the I T systems are great. We we appreciate the investment that the state has made in our systems. At the end of the day, it's about that agent that waits on you, though, and and how they make you feel during that transaction. So it, I'm disappointed to hear that and um, next time, let me know. Because, you know, it's also training, right? They might think they're being really efficient and they don't realize how that's perceived by the customer, so.
She got my work done efficiently. I didn't have any issues, but not one word that she uttered the entire time I was there.
Having to go out and get D O T physicals each year as a C D L driver, I've noticed that one of the the follow up afterwards is always kind of a hiccup. I sit there, I go get physical, the doctor's office says, okay, we'll send your paperwork in, everything's electronic now and this and that. But here's a phone number to call in three days to verify that they got it before they suspend your license. And I've always called that number because the doctor's office says, call the number. Is there and and this last time around, this last time around, it was great. I called the number, it rang three times, person answered the phone. And I just said, I need to verify you guys have my D O T physical, gave my driver's license number. They said, yep, you're good to go for another year. I was on the phone 90 seconds max, which is great. But is there another method?
So now you can go onto that my M V A account and see the status of your C D L medical certificate. The other good news is prior, and this is probably why they wanted to confirm it, prior to customer connects deployment, you either had to fax it in or email it in, they were more manual processes. Now you send it in electronically through our online system, you get a confirmation number and you're told when it is um, uploaded and when your record's been updated. So all that is communicated to you, but even if you had a doubt, you go into that my M V A account and it'll show you as a C D L driver what the status of your medical certificate is.
You want to set up your account.
But I have to set up the account.
You do have to set up your account, yes. But look at all the good information you have access to.
I'm going to be setting up a lot of accounts.
Yeah, just don't move.
So since you mentioned real I D, I'll talk about that a little bit. Um, so as you know, it is a federal requirement. The date is coming up May 2023 um, is the new implementation date. Uh, we are now 88% real I D compliant throughout the state of Maryland, which is um, really good in comparison to the national average, which is about 51% of Americans who are real I D compliant. So we're looking really good in advance of that deadline. Um, we're also excited to be the second state in the country to implement Maryland Mobile I D and Apple Wallet. So if you're an Apple user, you can actually, and you like to use the wallet as something for convenience, maybe for credit cards and other payments, uh, you actually can go in there and um, add your driver's license. It'll take a few steps, but you can use that at TSA checkpoints.
I saw that. I saw people doing that.
Did you? And Reagan, um, as well as other airports throughout the country. You may ask, why would I want my driver's license on my card? The reason is because when you give over that physical license, you're giving them all your personal information versus only sharing what's needed for that.
Well, if you lose it, you're out on vacation and you lose it and you got to get back on a plane somewhere. I mean, that's.
That's right.
I I saw that in the airport person. So they were trying, they were handing them um, their bottles of prescription to try to verify it and talking to an agent. And that's, you know, that's a scary situation. So.
And if you get a mobile passport, you get to go to the front of the line.
There you go.
I learned that recently. Yes, you do.
Yeah, a lot of conveniences with the with the mobile application. So it's something that we are trying to take a leadership in.
That's incentive.
It is an option for our customers, not volun, it's voluntary and there's no charge for it importantly. Um, for our Android users, there's a solution coming there too. We're working um, to put it in Google Wallet as well. So that's coming soon. Um, we also obviously remain focused on highway safety. Last year, we lost 563 people on our roadways. Obviously, we all agree that's 563 too many. Unfortunately, the issues that we see are really return issues from prior years, you know, people speeding, impaired, lack of wearing seat belts and distracted driving. In September, Governor Hogan announced nearly 40,000 for um, these uh, county agencies to address highway safety. We also encourage local jurisdictions to adopt your own local strategic highway safety plan that um, complements a statewide plan. The bipartisan infrastructure laws made funding available to develop those local plans. And jurisdictions who develop a plan can also receive funding, infrastructure funding from state highway administration. So that's definitely a benefit if you decide to move forward and we'd be happy to assist you with that process. Um, at M V A, we strive to be the best we can in everything we can do and and debunk all those old uh, perceptions about who we are and our customer service. But really, it's about our employees. I can't stress that enough that they're the ones who, you know, came to work during the pandemic and and continued to deliver a great service and also come up with these great ideas that I've talked about in terms of new services. So thank you for your time, unless you have any other questions, I'll.
So we really appreciate having the satellite M V A office here in Prince Frederick. So is that those hours based on volume of?
It is, although I will tell you, um, we are looking at whether there's a need to um, expand. Yes.
The hours, because I think right now it's three days a week.
Yeah, yeah, the number of days that we're here. Um, it's a balance. Obviously, we require additional staff, um, because it is limited staff. We send them from our Loville office, as you know, so um, it does require um, looking at resources and how we can best manage that. But certainly, population has grown and we recognize that and we want to make sure that a good experience is is had by everybody.
I heard the deputy say he's got lots of money, more money than they've ever had in the history of this.
All right, we'll talk later.
We're excited about that today. We are big time.
He's the largest C T P in history. That is true. But but for every dollar we have, we could spend three more if we had it.
Oh, don't worry, we could spend it for you.
Don't have it yet, but you know.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Ashish Shalanki from Maryland Aviation Administration.
Are we getting an airport?
That's what I heard.
And I didn't know about that. That's what I just heard.
Actually, you already have a couple of airports in your state, in your county, pardon me. Uh, good morning, Commissioners. Great to be with you.
Morning, morning.
Um, the pleasure to be here. Ashish Shalanki, Director of Regional Aviation Assistance. And uh, just an extension on the comments made with our colleagues at the M V A. Speaking of root canal surgeries, I hope if you've traveled out of B W I, your TSA experience has been improved. And um, we're working on that.
So it's really cool. Go online, see your parking lot, whether A, like B is down right now.
Yes.
Um, but A was, and then have the percents that you can watch all the way through. That was really cool. Um, yeah, it um, yeah, it's it's for the amount of people going through there. I tell you what, it's phenomenal how how it's handled.
We appreciate that and that's part of the what our focus has been on. Obviously, safety is our primary focus, making sure everyone is safe, secure going through our facilities as well as the customer experience.
Because that airport's busy.
I appreciate that. We want to be busy.
The word ranks in the country, but I tell you what, I can't imagine there's a lot more busier. I mean, I'm sure L A and Atlanta is a beast, but but I mean, that is a that is a moving and grooving airport.
We are, we are. We appreciate that. Our partners with the airlines have certainly recognized the demand, the need, that folks that want to travel out of our region, they've supplied the services and our customers are actually responding. And that's actually part of my comments, really tied to that, is the growth back at B W I Marshall is is encouraging because during the pandemic, we had dropped off. We were 450, 60% at best. Now, on the other side of the pandemic, we're actually above 80%. And even on holidays and other peak periods, we're exceeding our pre pandemic levels. So that's a good news to hear, certainly from from a analytics point of view, but also from the customer experience point of view. We know we we want to make sure that your experience coming and going out of B W I remains that easy come, easy go experience there.
You mentioned 80%. Is that 80% of capacity or 80% of pre pandemic?
Pre pandemic, sir. Yes, exactly. So we're, it's a trend line and and a positive trend line. Really, what we're looking at is how are we doing as a airport serving our customers? And and it's looking good. Um, we we know there's a lot of, uh, we call them headwinds. Uh, um, but uh, those are uh, for all of our community, uh, not just for aviation. And as we try to adjust to those headwinds, we're still optimistic in the improvements we're making at B W I Marshall, that they're going to offset some of the difficulties, whether it's security lines or parking challenges, that some of the other customer experiences will be balanced and thus making a better experience overall. Um, I'll share with you another example of uh, improvements at our airport cargo. Deputy Secretary mentioned cargo. Um, in the metro area, we are moving, we at B W I Marshall specifically, 618 million cargo pounds. Now, that's a lot of pounds. But to give you a percentage wise, we're that we're at 55% of our metro region airports. We're moving more than the other two airports and that's the positive nature that we were talking about in terms of customer service. A lot of people are ordering online, a lot of goods are moving and we're pleased to see a lot of that goods being moved also from B W I Marshall. We talked about capital projects, again, customer service, customer experience improvements. Um, these three projects I'm going to list, uh, you've heard about these before already and we're under construction on them. Restroom renovations, our Southwest Airlines maintenance hangar, as well as our concourse A B baggage handling system improvements. All of these are ongoing. Their construction is slated to be finished within a couple of years. Uh, a few of them actually are going to be step stair steps up. So you'll, depending on what concourse you go through, you actually see improvements right away. And again, these are all tied to our customer experience levels. We're trying to maintain that experience coming through our airport that has a positive reflection on the airport, our community and continue use in the future, certainly. Addition to that, uh, those improvements, we are spending 178 million at our two state airports, B W I Marshall and Martin State. This is tied to the I I J A that we were talking about earlier. And that's all tied to our runway and taxiway safety improvement needs. And so those project improvements will help us offset a lot of the other demands that we're putting money towards in our terminals, in our parking facilities that you've already, uh, we've spoken about earlier. And lastly, I'll share with you a brief update on our statewide aviation grant program. We're contributing 3.5 million this year to our regional airports. Now, that's airports everywhere from Southern Maryland to the Eastern Shore, Western Maryland. And that 3.5 million is going towards runways, taxiways, safety improvements predominantly. But again, it's tying to the common theme of customer experience, customer movement, and of course, the safety of our customers moving through our systems. So thank you for your time. It's been a pleasure. I thank you again. It's my pleasure to turn it over to Deputy Secretary.
Thank you, Ashish. Um, and thank you all for the opportunity to share our six year consolidated transportation program budget. Uh, now I'd like to toss it back to you, um, um, Commission President Earl Hans for any other questions. I know we asked, asked and had some discussions everywhere along, but if you have any other specific for our team, let us know.
Right. So first of all, I want to thank you for correcting the erosion issue down at the Prince Frederick Rescue Squad. We really do appreciate it. It was very nice. And I was very happy to get the email last week from one of your engineers that they're going to work on synchronizing the traffic lights in Prince Frederick.
Yes.
And uh, I don't want to seem greedy, but it occurred to me when I got that email, we've never mentioned Dunkirk and it would really be helpful if we could sync those two lights in Dunkirk. If uh, if that's a possibility, because uh, you know, it's not a big thing, but it's a little thing that adds up. And we do have, you know, especially during the evenings, significant traffic issues for our commuters coming back into the county. And as I traveled through Dunkirk, uh, I'm going to catch one or the other. And uh, I I take full full blame for not raising that earlier, but we really appreciate the Prince Frederick project. I think in the email, it said it might be 18 months to 24 months for completion, but at least you're starting down that path to get that project done. And uh, it is a pleasant drive into Calvert County unless you're coming through Prince Frederick at about four o'clock, Monday through Friday, and then it's not so pleasant.
Coming down two for this morning was a piece of cake.
You were against traffic.
Way better than up in Baltimore area. My goodness, it was a mess.
Don't tell anybody.
Yeah. And you guys know, five minutes waiting on the road feels like 10. You know what I mean? When, you know what I mean? It it really is. It's it's perception and and, you know, and when I I was a kid, Route Four didn't even go all the way through the county. Trying to explain to my kids that I wouldn't even see five cars going from Lusby to Prince Frederick back and forth the entire time. They're like, huh? Because there's five cars in front of us. So the the little things really do count that can ease things up and and like Commissioner Hans's point, you know, coming in to Dunkirk, you save a couple of minutes there. I mean, it's it's enormous. It really is, even if it sounds small.
No, we understand.
And I want to congratulate you. The Nice Middleton Bridge project, that's amazing. Uh, but I guess the company was blessed with uh, mild winters. But to have that project come in three months early under, I heard it was under budget, uh, that's quite an accomplishment. So I'm I'm sure they got a very nice bonus, but uh.
Well, I, you know, obviously, as the contractor may have, as the state, we don't, but. But we, you know, our bonus is providing the services for our citizens and businesses.
Well, the nice part is, the nice part is with them being done so early, that means they can just go ahead and bring the stuff right around the point, come up to the Thomas Johnson and go ahead and start working on it. They got finished early, they can just use that right down there.
Um, that's not how it works.
Well, we we definitely know that Thomas Johnson is on is on your list.
All right. I would like to mention that we here in Calvert are blessed by having an amazing uh, communications and media relations teams division with our citizens. We have probably 15 to 20% of our population in Calvert County subscribe to different media outlets that we populate stuff on. Couple of weeks ago, there was a major road closure here in Calvert County for construction.
Mount Harmony Road.
We found out about it. We found out about the full extent of it. Our Public Works Department found out about. We found out about it. We found out about the full extent of it. Our Public Works Department found out about the full extent of it less than thirty-six hours before the closure actually took place. After hearing a lot of phone calls from the people that lived in that immediate area and everything else, and the fire department having to make detours and everything else, I ask in the future, if there's any way possible that, that the state can get us information as early as possible for major projects or even minor projects, our, our communications teams would love to be able to get ahold of that, shoot it out to our public so they're, so they're more aware earlier on of, of things that are going to change their day-to-day lives, and sometimes for nine months, like the one road's going to be closed for, the one intersection, major intersection's going to be closed for nine months. So communications, I think, is, we, we'd love to see, be able to get that information out to the public earlier and better.
Gotcha. Tim or Kim, was there a reason why that was?
Team blessed with it.
So the short answer is happy to more proactively share communication. I completely agree. Uh, the more we can share that, uh, folks don't necessarily get upset if there's a delay. They get upset when there's an unexpected delay, right?
Right.
So, uh, the, our team, we're working within the existing contract mechanisms, and sometimes the contractor has, within our existing contract, has that permission within a thirty-six hour window. We're looking at our existing contracts to make sure we, they give us more advanced notice than that, and happy to sh- like, when we do that, um, use your media outlets to, to better share that with the, the community as well.
And Director Willis, while we have these folks, does, I, I've had some discussions with Director Kerry Dahl about, you know, does he have a good line with you guys, a current line? Um, you know, for years, when, when Ry was here, you know, he, he knew everybody that ever worked at the state, but, but in the last couple of years, it's been a lot of changes. Do we have a good current connection to where, for these updates and stuff? Um...
Commissioners Mark Willis, County Administrator. Kim Tran and I, uh, we've worked together back when I was in Public Works, but also back when I was in planning and zoning. I know I've got Public Works in the back of the office or the back of the courtroom here. We have an outstanding relationship with District Five and certainly with the Secretary's Office whenever we need to. So I think this particular one, there were signs out early for Mount Harmony. There were signs out, but the notices that, that normally go out, uh, that you might see on Facebook or social media, I think that some folks didn't see it. They were concerned about it. We addressed it. It, it got pointed out, so there's actually no relationship problem between the state and the county government.
Good, good. So we're also very happy to see the projects on two thirty-one moving forward because we've had some starts and stops along the way, and, you know, there's a significant traffic issues on two thirty-one at times, and we believe those projects are going to greatly enhance the safety of that road. So we're really like happy to see those projects moving forward. So now that I've finished all, excuse me, Senator Jackson?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Um, uh, I failed to mention earlier, uh, again, uh, thank you for the team's work on Mount Harmony Road. Senator Miller and I, uh, you know, work very closely and all with the Commissioners, uh, with, uh, your office, uh, regarding Mount Harmony Road, and, uh, and please feel free, uh, any, uh, any information or all the Commissioner, please feel free to send it to our office. We'll put it out as well. So, thank you all again.
Thanks, Senator. Thank you. So we finished the list. A good stuff.
Okay.
So, of course, you know, we're going to talk about the bridge at To- the Thomas Johnson Bridge, and we understand that it's a significant state project, but we also have significant issues there with our citizens that work on the other side of the bridge and commerce that trans- transits across that bridge every day. And, uh, you know, it's always at the top of our list because it is an important, you know, it's an emergency route for us should something bad happen, which we hope doesn't. Um, but it is, that bridge was not designed for the traffic flow that's going across it today. And we understand that it may be structurally sound, as we talked in Ocean City, but it's not, uh...
Capacity's coming up short, right?
Exactly. So we're going to keep pushing for that bridge. Maybe I'll live to see it, maybe I won't, but, um, you proved that the Nice Middleton Bridge, it can be done. So, uh, we, we would fully support any efforts to get that project moved up the list. Um...
Definitely well noted.
And I get, I know you guys, you've heard us for years, talk about all the reasons and everything, but it's so true. Even somebody breaking down, you shut down the lower end of the county on both sides for, you know, I mean, it is, it, it, the, the folks that work there, it, it's a traumatic experience that, I mean, it even affects when you go and when you don't. You look at your watch and go, oh, my goodness, it's almost three o'clock. Get across that bridge. You know, and I've told folks, you know, because they, they, anytime they see anything, and, and being that I live down that way, so I hear about the bridge on a regular basis. For the record, I know it's not in your CIP. How far down the pole realistically is that bridge? That people can once and for all hear it. I've told them, if my grandchild goes over it, I'd be shocked. Now, I don't know if I'm exaggerating, but for the record, I know we have a low population opposed to Baltimore, Montgomery County, but for us, it truly is. And I know you guys know, it's huge. It really is. And I understand when I think, when I got elected, I think I heard the bill was eight hundred and thirty million dollars back then. We've seen what building costs are. I get it. But realistically, if you had a crystal ball, and I know...
Not to put you on the spot or anything.
Not to put you on the spot.
And the cameras are on and they are recording.
It's just us. Twenty years, thirty years? Does it have to fall in the water?
Uh, unfortunately, I do not have an answer to that question. I mean, obviously, we're about to, to have a, a change in administrations. Um, MDOT recognizes how great a priority that is to more than just Calver County, um, down, down here in Southern Maryland. Southern Maryland is one of the fastest-growing parts of the state. It's going to continue to grow. You know, we know this is the land of pleasant living. Okay, and it's a great place to, to come and live and, and raise a family and start a business.
We really not promoting that.
No.
And, and, and I will tell you, anybody that...
I'm, I'm a lifelong Marylander, so I know already.
We're going to scratch that out.
Anybody that ever runs for office, they come out and say, I'm going to get us that bridge. No, you're not. You're not. I'm like, I, I will never lie to my folks. I just won't do it. And I'm like, look, we meet with you guys once a year. It don't happen unless it comes through there. That's a fact. And I'm like, so that person out there with the little bullhorn saying, you know, it's, you know, so that's why, you know, to ch- try to put that issue to bed a little bit, a, a realistic time zone. I, I, because you guys know it's, it's, you know, it's every year from us.
My, my advice is that what you're doing right now, keep doing it.
Oh, I know Squeaky Wheel gets the grease, but...
Continue to trumpet it and...
We did send you a joint letter with St. Mary's County recently about, uh, during the pandemic, we had a rash of jumpers off the bridge and asked if there were some safety devices that could be installed to maybe prevent or deter that. And, uh, originally, I think we received a letter that said that that probably wasn't going to happen, but I thought I heard there might be some reconsideration or looking at options to do something on the bridge. Did I dream that or?
You might have dreamed, but yeah, but in reality, that did happen. Uh, we actually, uh, as part of the JCR with our legislators, uh, we have a report that was just looked at it from a, a, kind of an engineering slash operations perspective. We have some recommendations up there. There are some, they're, there's, they're not inexpensive. Um, so we're looking at that, but also kind of back to the overall concept there. We are moving forward with planning efforts, uh, to look at, opportunities with the Navy on whether we need to have the bridge up as high as it does. Um, I think moving in that direction unlocks some potential opportunities, and then let's be honest, the bipartisan infrastructure bill, IJ, there's discretionary funding out there as well. So, um, while I'm not going to give you a date, I think there's, we're more optimistic that we can move forward with the planning and, and design side of this, especially if we can lower that bridge than we did in the past. And then that, to be honest with you, that eliminates some other challenges we have as well.
Yeah, but I'm not going to see that lower bridge, I'm afraid. So, um, but if there, you know, we certainly still would ask that you investigate opportunities to deter, help prevent.
A current dollar amount on what the estimate cost to replace that bridge is?
Well, it's, it's, it's back to kind of what I was talking about before. It's kind of an overall system. You can't just widen the bridge and not have it on both sides.
Sure, I know St. Mary's needs some upgrading and same on our side.
You're probably talking just approaches and everything else, uh, eight hundred billion-ish and on, on the side, and probably close to six hundred for the bridge itself.
So what was the final for a Nice Middleton?
It was, um, fi- yeah, go ahead.
So the total project in the CTP was six hundred and thirty-six million dollars. The bridge only was four hundred and sixty-three million.
So you know my next question. You know what's coming now. Why is the Thomas Johnson eight hundred million and you built the Harry Nice for four thirty-seven?
Well, we did take bids before the recent inflation, so that...
But I've heard eight hundred million for the last three or four, since I've been here.
Eight years when I counted on it. Eight years ago, it was eight thirty.
It's always been eight hundred million, but you built the Nice Middleton for four thirty-seven.
There's four miles of widening here that aren't, that don't exist over Nice Middleton.
But it's a shorter bridge. That widening is land.
What, four miles?
Because they're talking about dualizing the road on the side.
St. Mary's on Calver's side so that you don't have...
But that's not waterwork. That's land work, which is a lot cheaper than waterwork. But anyway...
It's still expensive, yes.
I think it's worth pointing out, too, the Nice Middleton Bridge, it, the re- the way that was financed was with bonds issued against the pledged revenues from tolls.
And that's where I was going. That's, that's the, that's the, right, the real deal. It's a toll bridge, so there's a funding source. I mean, it, just be honest, all right? I mean, just be honest in the room. And, and, and I've told people too...
The fact is a funding source for the Nice Middleton.
Absolutely. I mean, that, that's, that's to really get down to it, and, and I've told people, uh, for the years is they don't want to see a toll bridge in Solomon's, and I think, and, and, and I think if all of a sudden there was a toll bridge, it would shoot up that CIP list a whole lot faster. But being that it's not, it stays at the bottom. Just my conspiracy side of me, sorry, but you know...
But Commissioner Hart, the hardest thing to do is to take back something that's been given, which has been a free ride across the bridge.
Correct. And we're seeing toll bridges, they have a funding source, right? I mean, so...
But aside from that, the double construction cost is what piqued my interest.
The, the Nice Middleton Bridge was only two point three miles total for the project limits.
The bridge itself.
The, the highway approaches plus bridge is two point three miles.
Now, saying all that, in the state of Maryland, there's lots of big projects, you know, that, 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 you know, it, it sometimes takes a long time, years and sometimes decades, but they eventually get built. ICC, Purple Line, Nice Middleton Bridge. You, we just got to keep at it.
He's telling you nicely, you're not going to see it. That's what he's doing.
Yep, yep. And, and, and like I've told folks that I don't think we'll ever see it until it's a toll bridge. So, and that's a traumatic thought for somebody that goes over top of it every single day to work, or as connected as we are on, on the, the southern side of the county to commerce and back and forth, uh, a, you know, Harry Nice, you go over it to work, okay, maybe once and then back or what have you, but there are people making several trips over top that, and that's...
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I do know that in the past, we've gotten an, an unsolicited P three inquiry, but then the issue is, yes, the, the toll.
And what would that toll be? And like with anything, you, you know, it's, starts off, it's a dollar, and then it's two, and then it's three, and that's where the pause comes in. And back to Commissioner Williams's point, you know, and, um, so, because you have folks say, hey, I'll go for a toll if you guarantee me it doesn't go over this. And we know there's no such thing.
Right.
So other projects on our list that aren't quite on the CIP is Route Four, uh, safety corrections above the Calver County line in Dan Ronald County. I know that's been, uh, talked about for years. Senator Miller used to push for that project, but we have a lot of commuters going north every day, and that section of road from two fifty-eight to two sixty on Route Four northbound is, uh, no shoulders and a little wavy, as they say, and so, uh, we want to keep that in sight. Um, also, the final phase of the Prince Frederick project for Route Four there above Stokely Road. Make sure we keep that on the list as well. Um, and, uh, we, every once in a while, you all do an overlay of tar and chip. And, uh, I know why you do that. Our citizens are not very happy when you do that. Um, we did that for a while. We don't do that anymore. We just don't see where there's any economic advantage to it. Um, and once again, you know, our, like the tolls, our citizens are spoiled in Calver County with asphalt roads. I grew up with tar and chip. A lot of these people here don't know what tar and chip is until you all do an overlay now, and, uh, that...
They hate slurry with a passion.
Yeah, the new word, slurry, but, uh...
They'd almost rather you not do it. Kid, you not? I mean, and, and it's, it's that, you know, yeah.
So anyway, just want to raise that issue with you that I'm not sure we're not the only ones that raise that when you do those projects.
We've gotten similar feedback.
So, uh, the last thing I have on my list is, uh, we would love to get back to our full share of highway user funds. Uh, you know, it's, uh, we lost that money a while back, and, uh, just like you, we have projects of our own that we're trying to do, and with inflation, it makes it a lot harder.
The governor worked on that to keep getting the number up, so...
And we got a little increase, but we're not back to where we were. And, you know, our citizens pay a large, you know, paying gas tax and, uh, contribute significantly, and it is bothersome that that money goes for projects that we don't believe benefit us. So, uh, just have to raise those issues with you to keep them in, keep them in the light.
And we want to hear them.
Well, good. I should have made a longer list. But I will end up, we really do appreciate the two thirty-one and synchronizing of the lights that we, and we understand there's administration change, and, uh, you know, there's not a bulldozer sitting here right now, but we do appreciate that, that you all have got it on the list and are actively working.
Yes, all local jurisdictions have to keep that H U R issue in the limelight.
Yeah, so...
Moving forward.
I don't, if anybody has anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Really thank you and your staff, having all of them come down to Calver County and, uh, visit with us, and, uh, we'll stay in touch.
All right.
We got some great restaurants down here. Stay low.
Yeah, I was looking for some coffee. You got to go down to the...
Starbucks, Dunkin' Donuts.
Somebody's opened up a shop right across the street, right?
Ah, well, maybe. So, but we do appreciate your time and anything you need from us. Please don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
You all take care.
Yes, sir. You too. Have a great day.
Oh, oh, and the Calver Transit provides eighty thousand trips per year.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Travis.
So... So the next item on the agenda is consent. We have two items under consent. First item is Department of Community Resources Calvert-Libery DHCD Broadband Accessibility Project Grant. Item two is Department of Community Resources Emergency Shelter Purchase Agreement. Are there any objections to the two items under consent?
None.
Hearing none, those items will be adopted as presented. Next item on the agenda is a work session with the Office of the County Attorney. Mr. County Attorney.
Morning, sir.
Morning, Commissioners. John Norris, County Attorney. I am happy to be the mouthpiece of all of your directors. I have addressed one of your directives, and that is enhancing transparency by giving the public access to the records that are theirs. So a little bit of background, the Public Information Act is a state law that was adopted to grant the public broad rights of access to records, balancing that right with the protection of legitimate governmental interests in safety and security and the privacy of individual citizens. To dispel a common misunderstanding, the Public Information Act does not require any government agency to create a record that doesn't exist. That is, you provide records that are available for the public that do not, uh, risk public safety or security or violate the privacy rights of individuals. So, um, there is a presumption, though, that I need to file a public information request to find out what time the transfer station, the green box stations close on the weekends, or is it open on the holiday? Those are not public information requests. Those can be handled with a telephone call and don't require the formality of going through a response. Public Information Act is, according to the Attorney General, based on the enduring principle that public knowledge of government activities is critical to the functioning of a democratic society. So public information requests give you access to records of what the government is doing, what it has done, sometimes what it might be planning to do. So transparency is at the core of the Public Information Act, um, but also the act accounts for the privacy of individuals, public safety and security... But also, the act accounts for the privacy of individuals, public safety and security. There, in a nutshell, a person can request a record by submitting a written request to the custodian. If they submit the written request to the wrong person, but whoever gets that letter understands, or email, understands who the, what the request is. And who the custodian is, they're required to forward that on to the correct department. So each of the departments of county government are custodians of their own records. Uh, that means they are also responsible for following their own record retention policy. And, and having certificates of destruction in their files when those records are, are eliminated. Certificate of Destruction is the same as providing access to the records. So unfortunately, once the record's gone, it's recorded that it's gone and the public, and frankly, the government no longer has access to those records. Records that are of, of state importance and historical importance are recorded forever with the Maryland State Archives. In accordance with our record retention policies. If the custodian grants the request for a record, uh, they'll produce that record as soon as possible, immediately in some instances. So for instance, the Department of Planning and Zoning has identified records that are commonly requested. And make them available at the front counter without having to submit a written request. Zoning maps are available at the front counter for anybody to view. Viewing public records is free. Getting copies of them does cost. So trying to balance the, um, burden on the taxpayer with the right to public access. Uh, the first two hours are, um, free. And then everything else is paid for at the unlooted rate, that is, the hourly rate for the employees that are fulfilling the request. So we're back again because the Commissioners charged all the departments with developing a means to ensure public access. Promoting consistent application of the Public Information Act. And throughout county government, and directed staff to find efficiencies to provide access without unnecessary cost or delay. So in implementing the Board's directive, all the directors participated in drafting a local ordinance that was made part of the package for today. And several of the project coordinators, or actually, one of the special project coordinators within the county administrator's office. Has identified resources that'll aid in the efficiency of responding to the request. Fancy way of saying they found a piece of software, it's cheaper than Workday. And it'll do all the things Workday will do, but better for the Public Information Act. So, eight thousand dollar piece of software will track and make available to the public on the website, everybody else's requests. So if you are asking for something we've already provided, it's already there. All you have to do is log into the website and look at it. Don't need to make a copy. So here's an overview. The objective of the draft ordinance is to facilitate the public's access. And make sure that we, um, minimize the cost and time delays for the applicants. And that they get a consistent, repeatable result. In furtherance of the objective, each director is going to develop a proactive disclosure policy of records that are available for inspection. As Planning and Zoning has already done for some. And it may vary as appropriate to the type of record. Some of those may be available at the counter, some of them may be available online. Some of them, um, could be a, a paper copy that you sign up for a subscription. To receive a notice of the Board of County Commissioners, uh, scheduled for meetings for the next calendar year. It'd be like a subscription service. On to balance the burden, again, the taxpayer pays for the first two hours of the person that's doing the search. We try to move the searching down to the lowest paid person in the office. Or in the facility that can perform the work. And then we typically don't charge for the more expensive hours. So we try not to make it a burden for people to find out what it is the government's doing. There are waivers that are available for indigence. And there are waivers that are available under the state law for public interest.
I don't know if this is ever, if this occurs, but if pub, if public, Joe Public reaches out and says. I want information about incident A. And then Jane calls up a month later and asks for the same information for the same incident. And if Joe's already paid it. Is it still billed to Jane or is that same information now available free to anybody that calls?
The only additional charge for Jane, so Jane's only charge would be the media. So if it was for a nine-one-one call and they wanted it on CD or a thumb drive. The cost of that media, CD or thumb drive, would be the only charge to Jane. Once the search is performed, it can be duplicated. In all honesty, because people, uh, word things differently, it's, it's sometimes difficult to understand what it is that's being asked for. And oftentimes they'll ask for the world, but they really want the nugget. And having conversations with people to make sure you're getting what they want and not what they don't want. Is more cost effective, more time effective. And you could find that even though Jane asked for X, Y, Z, what she's really asking for is Y, which she just provided to Bob last week.
Gotcha.
So we don't charge for what work we've already done. For the public interest, there is no real guidance yet in the state law. And this state law was adopted in nineteen seventy, so I'm not sure we're going to get real good guidance on what it is to be in the public interest. However, our Public Information Act follows very closely the Federal Freedom of Information Act, FOIA. And FOIA has well-developed regulations in the Code of Federal Regulations. We look there to see what they are using for what it means to be in the public interest. And it's a four-part test. Whether the subject of the requested public record concerns identifiable operations or activities within county government. In a connection that's direct, clear, not remote or attenuated. Whether the information, informative value of the information to be disclosed. And whether the disclosure is likely to contribute to the understanding of government operations or activities. Whether disclosure will likely contribute to understanding of the subject by a reasonably broad audience. And whether disclosure is likely to contribute significantly to public understanding of government operations or activities. There have been partial waivers that have been granted, uh, for those that have a broad reach. Um, think National Syndicated Newspaper, that was asking for information on a subject that was not widely known. Nor was the governmental process for analyzing it broadly known. And so there'd be some general benefit to the public in understanding how government operates in this particular circumstance. That warranted a partial waiver for records that were going to cost about four thousand dollars. And, and so we believe that there was sufficient benefit to the public to waive a lot of the charges. So public could understand. So now that we've developed this ordinance, um, we know that there are organizations within the county that have been critical of county government and transparency in particular. And what we're asking for is permission from the Board, not to yet schedule this for a public hearing, but to solicit additional, well, in this case, first time. Public input on this draft to see whether or not it dots the I's and crosses the T's. Or if there are simple modifications that we could incorporate before going to public hearing to bring you a better product. So that's, that's the ask for today.
I think we're good.
Okay. We will proceed then in soliciting some public input and bring it back on your agenda.
So what's the plan for doing that?
Uh, we'll do direct outreach to the organizations that we're aware of. And certainly if, um, we can coordinate well with the CMR group and the webmaster. We may be able to put a survey together on the county website.
Very good.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to take a little executive privilege. We have a guest in the audience, Superintendent Tansel. How are you?
Good to see you, sir.
Welcome.
Does that mean I gotta say something?
It doesn't mean you have to, but I'm giving you an opportunity if you would like to.
You, you can even sit up front if you like.
Yeah.
It's like the privilege, man.
We got an MTC.
Yeah, we, uh, didn't know you were coming. Thank you.
Yeah, no, no problem. Uh, thank you so much for the opportunity to, to speak. Uh, my goal is to be more, um, in touch with everything going on within the community. I learned that these meetings they play, I believe, every Tuesday, eleven o'clock. So I asked that my secretary put it on my calendar. And if I can make it, my goal is to be here so I can learn. Um, I'm a team guy. I want to work collaboratively with everybody. That's the goal.
Good. Anything you want to talk about? I don't want to put you on the spot, but here's your.
How's your experience so far?
He wants to talk about turf.
So far, so good. So far, so good. I am, uh, well, he mentioned turf fields, definitely. I am a supporter and my goal is to have the conversation, just to give the young people a yes or no. Uh, young people have been asking me all, every high school I visit, are we getting it? As a matter of fact, I did an interview with a young lady from Huntingtown. It's a video. And she said, everyone wants a no. Are we getting turf field? I said, well, I'm have the conversation. If we can make it happen, I love that. If it doesn't happen, at least they can have a hard no, and we can move on. So that's where I'm at.
So how's the school year going so far?
So far, so good. I'm actually just leaving Calvert Elementary, had the opportunity to read to the first grade class there. I'm reading across Calvert County. At every elementary school that I touch, I'm reading there. Every school that I visit, I'm visiting and meeting with a group of young people. Um, so just continue to learn the community, but young people educators do an amazing job right now.
Good. So whenever you want to, you could schedule a time. We'll, we'll get you on the agenda. You can come in and give an update and talk about whatever you'd like.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, anytime.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you for stopping.
Great seeing you.
Nice for coming, sir.
Thank you.
Cowboys still need a tight end.
My biological clock is ticked.
Oh, just wait, it gets a lot faster.
But you have to understand, we are talking about the Cowboys.
So the next item on the official agenda is public comment.
Thank you, sir. The Board of County Commissioners adopted a resolution in nineteen eighty-nine intending to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. A copy is found here to my right. The Ethics Commission has asked us that we remind speakers of public comment that lobbyists include those who seek to influence public policy. And lobbyists must register in advance. Floor's been open for public comment from persons in the meeting room who may begin making their way to the microphone, then to those joining virtually. All speakers must identify themselves. And whether speaking as an individual, will you be allocated two minutes? Or as the designated representative of a group, will you be allocated five minutes? For those attending virtually, if you wish to speak, please press star nine on your phone or use the raise your hand function. Individuals will be unmuted one at a time. Is there anybody in the room that wishes to speak?
Of course. You're trying, but go ahead.
Hi, Bob.
My name's Bob Estes. I'm speaking as an individual citizen. And I'm here with good news. And the good news is I have a meeting, um, quite often on Tuesday mornings with a civil, a civic group. And I've never, ever, ever seen them as happy and optimistic as they, uh, were today. And I would say that that's because of the actions and work that you all have done, listening to the citizens. Putting, uh, some plans, uh, of course, we are talking about the town center, uh, you know, in place. But, uh, I think the sometimes mood matters and I thank you for putting us citizens in a better mood. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room? We do have Mr. Cormier. Mr. Cormier.
Good morning Commissioners. My name's Joseph Cormier from Owens, Maryland. I just want to take a minute today and, uh, give a big thank you to the team at Calvert County Sheriff's Office for part due. Last week, the Pathfinder's taught us in what to do during traffic stop training. Uh, they ran two lanes and, uh, had a touch of truck. Had, uh, individuals from the, uh, local fire departments and the state police there. Uh, we had a great resource there inside for all of our, uh, community resources to bring those to the people. Uh, so again, a big thank you to the Calvert County Sheriff's Office for that community outreach. Uh, very much appreciated. Thanks so much and have a great day.
Thank you. Mr. President, that is the last speaker.
Thank you. And that takes us down to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Hart?
Uh, nothing today, Mr. President.
Thank you. Commissioner Gadyway?
Just wanted to, and I had this written down before Dr. Tansel walked in the room. I did have an opportunity to meet with our new school superintendent, Dr. Tansel. I, I personally really look forward to the future of Calvert County Public Schools. Um, the better communication, the better ideas than we've had in the past. Uh, great meeting, Doctor. Thank you for your time. And I look forward to it. Saturday evening, stopped by Huntingtown Volunteer Fire Department for a banquet. They have a great facility there that's available. They have people there that can help with planning, staffing and everything else. If you have some special event, it's a great place to go.
Is there a rule against commercial plugs, Mr. Gadyway?
I'm just saying, I was there and it was a great place. And I have no affiliation with it.
Stop putting disclaimers.
If I, if I goofed up, I apologize. I'm looking at John. And the next day, we happened to be at the, uh, American Legion at the beach, another great facility. Um, for another Eagle Scout, Dylan Wood. Phenomenal young man, um, great family. I could tell that there was, the entire troop works together like nobody's business in order to make sure that. They get these young men to, uh, young men and women, sorry. Um, to the, the pinnacle of success of Eagle Scout. So I commend him and all the others up there at four twenty-nine and throughout boy scouting in, in the entire county. Great program and I always look forward to those Eagle Scout ceremonies. And finally, um, I'm gonna, it's kind of a PSA, not an advertisement. But I just noticed this is our last meeting before Halloween. And I encourage everybody to go out there, have fun, be smart about it. If you're a business owner or if you're a commuter or anybody, I, I highly urge you to consider getting your vehicles off the road earlier than later. We've had, regretfully, some pedestrian accidents in the county over the last few months. And I'd love nothing more to know that we can go through Halloween without any incidents whatsoever and nobody getting hurt. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Just, uh, want to express my condolences to the friends and family of Margaret Miller, who passed away a couple of weeks ago. And I too want to express to the electorate to have a safe Halloween. And watch out for the ghosts and goblins.
I hope they didn't hear that.
Too, alright. So first of all, we want to extend our sincere condolences to the families of Andrew, Anthony Jacks and Jim Mulliken. Retired county employees that passed away this past week, along with Margaret Miller, who was very active in the community. Also, uh, want to remind everyone that early voting starts on October twenty-seventh. And runs through November the third. There are three locations in Calvert County. And please get out and vote. We also, Saturday, Sunday, Sunday night, I went to ACLT fundraiser at Patterson Park. They had a, a great event there. They raised a lot of money for a very, uh, great cause. For those of you that aren't familiar, uh, the American Chestnut Land Trust is what ACLT stands for. And they have preserved the Parker's Creek watershed. If you, uh, Google map and look at the Puck's Creek watershed, you'll see very little housing in that watershed. And that's to, due to the efforts of that volunteer organization that have preserved forty-four hundred acres, I believe. It's over four thousand acres in the watershed through, uh, you know, various resources. Um, and have done a great job in preserving that particular watershed. It's, it's quite an accomplishment. Uh, too, Sunday was at the Eagle Scout ceremony for Dylan Wood. And, uh, I'm always amazed at all the Eagle Scout ceremonies, that the young men and young women, uh, what they've done and accomplished at such a young age. Is quite an achievement. And as I said, Sunday, when I first got elected, Commissioner Nutter said, you gotta go to Eagle Scout ceremonies. And I said, yeah, okay, we're going to get invited to a bunch of stuff. But I don't try not to miss one and think I've only missed two. Uh, one, we had a double that day and I was out of town. Because, uh, it's, it's quite a thing to see these young people and the decisions that they've made. So it's quite an accomplishment. And as Commissioner Gadyway says, it's a group effort. You know, I always thank the volunteer scout leaders and scout masters, because without them, there wouldn't be a program for these young people. And, uh, I encourage everyone with young children, get them engaged in scouting. Don't, don't see any bad scouts. So it's a great organization. Also, I want to, uh, mention to, uh, people that on October the eighth, we had an incident at Holland Point Park. At a football game. the 8th, we had an incident at Holland Point Park at a football game, and, uh, there's some rumblings in the community about that, uh, and I just want everybody to know that we have taken significant action. We have suspended both teams from parks and rec play, and for those individuals that can, we can identify, we have trespassed them so they cannot be on parks and rec property for a year. We will not tolerate fights on public parks, especially when adults are fighting with children. We will not tolerate that in this county. So we have taken action, and, uh, just want everybody to know that we, we take that very, very seriously. So if you hear anything, that's what we've done. I too want to remind everybody, Halloween's coming up, Monday, there's a lot of trunk or treats around that you can go to and get all the candy you'll ever need without knocking door to door, but as, uh, was said, please on Monday night, be cautious, there will be young ones running around in the dark, and we don't want to have any incidents. So I believe that concludes my comments. Just want to wish everybody a very happy and safe Halloween. So with that, Commissioner Williams, I believe you have a motion for me?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to recess to executive session pursuant to 3-305 B1I to discuss the employment of employees over whom the Board has jurisdiction.
Second. Motion, the second, that we adjourned executive session, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Y'all have a great day.